Alrighty, I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Town of Pompey Planning Board. To order on March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, and this is our first meeting of two thousand and twenty-one. Like to welcome everyone. A couple matters of business real quick in that this meeting is held tonight, held via Zoom, it's being recorded and livestream via Facebook in accordance with Governor Cuomo's executive order number two zero two dash one. Our last meeting that was held was October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, and if I could have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from that meeting. If someone likes to make a motion and say aye and wave, then second that, please.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Kevin, is there a second?
I can second.
And that was seconded by Dan. Any discussion? Otherwise, all in favor, please. Yeah, raise hands, wave, say hi.
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 Alright, anybody opposed? Otherwise, motion accepted to accept the meeting minutes. Before we go any further, I guess Nikki can, or Nikki, scratch that. Donna, can you do a roll call of attendance for everybody, please?
I certainly can. Sue Smith?
I am here.
Carl? I believe he's absent. Kevin Corson?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
John Shaheen?
Here.
Roy Smith?
Here.
And our new member, Karen Whalen.
And welcome aboard, Karen. I guess, two things. One, John Shaheen, welcome back for another term. And Karen, welcome aboard. You're filling out at least a couple of years for us, and I guess if you just take a quick minute and introduce yourselves to everybody, that would be fantastic.
My name is Karen Whalen. I live on Bluegrass Boulevard. We've been here twenty-two years or so. I have three daughters, the la- twenty-one, nineteen, seventeen, and my youngest just grad- is grad senior. This is my golden retriever right here, so sorry. The youngest is graduating from high school this year. I'm a real estate agent now. I graduated from Clarkson as a civil engineer and been in this new career about three years, so.
Okay, welcome aboard, Karen.
Thank you.
I'm a Clarkson grad as well, Karen.
Love it.
Alright, with that, I do want to, as this is our first meeting of the year, we do need to have a motion which I will make that we would have the third Monday of the month at seven PM set aside for the Planning Board meeting when there is an agenda. So I will make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by John Shaheen. Is there any discussion on, I guess it's more timing of the meetings than the date because we are fairly locked in as to when our lawyer representation is available to us too, and when we can get into the town hall. Everybody good with a seven o'clock start time?
You know what Shakespeare said about the lawyers?
Hey.
Alright.
Go easy.
I want, I do want you to know that if you prefer an earlier time, I am available at an earlier time. I know that some boards aren't going to an earlier start, six thirty. I leave that to you. I'd be willing to do either any, whatever you prefer.
Discussion?
I'm available as well.
Six thirty's fine by me.
March premier.
It's fine for me, too.
Okay. So, let's see, from there, then I would make a motion to amend my motion.
Excuse me, and if I can just, and, and I, another thing is, when we go back to live, you know, if that's convenient for the public, a six thirty start time, I understand, and again, I'm not swaying one way or the other. Most boards have, many boards have been doing that recently. But maybe it's a further commute for people who want to come in person. I don't know.
I, well, and the whole history of things, we used to start at seven thirty and then it went to seven, so I could do either, so.
Jamie, can we amend that later on?
It absolutely is amendable.
Yeah.
And so, it would be, yeah, I, maybe we can try it for a year and see how it goes.
I make a motion, we move the meeting to six thirty.
Who, Kevin motioned and John seconded?
I, I second.
Yes, plain of matter first, though, that I retract my original motion at the seven o'clock and let Kevin go with the six thirty then, so. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of third Monday beginning at six thirty, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, six thirty it is. Great, and from that, Jamie, is there any other organizational stuff that I'm missing right now?
I don't know if, if you also pick your own consultants, engineer and planning board, but that is usually done as well at the first meeting.
They're usually set by town board and we go with them.
Okay.
So.
That's, that's good. So, I guess we're, we're in, Steve.
Well, we have a lot of sway, so.
Actually, you do as a planning board, just so you know.
Right, right. Usually comes back to a budget thing too, though. So, okay, from that, on our agenda this evening, we do have an application, the Hootnik subdivision. Sally Hootnik and represented by attorney Diane Finnegan, this parcel is zero zero four dot dash zero one dash zero three dot one. There are a couple other parcels involved with it, but that's the main one. And that, yeah, it's a subdivision, it's not really a site plan review per se that the agenda referred to. Application came in, there was some discussion, and then it was kind of rehashed around a little bit, came back in, and that's what we are looking at. I, applicate, I guess I could give a little background, or Jamie could give a little background, or should we just let Diane start from there? What do you think, Jamie?
Yeah, I think that Diane can start. Can we pull up the, the PDF?
Map?
Yes. Is that something you can do?
I don't have it.
Okay, does everyone have the map? Available? Okay.
Do you want me to share it?
Sure, Steve. That would be great. So, now everybody has a copy of the map. Can everybody see the map that was shared?
Can you go full screen, Steve?
Um, that's what I'm at.
There we go.
A little better. I don't see the whole subdivision. I guess, I could move it around.
Yeah. Yep. That helps, Steve.
Let me give you a little background so that you understand how we've gotten to this point and help you locate the parcels for your own reference with regard to where they are in the town of Pompey. This area is located just outside the town of Manlius. It's the first street, Clearwater, Clearwater Circle is the first street after you leave the town of Manlius. On the right-hand side, it's a circle that was developed in the late eighties, and there were six parcels that were created and made into one-family homes. That area is zoned R forty. That, the home that you see most north on the map at Clearwater Circle is the, is the current Hootnik residence, and that's Lot Three A. At a point in time, in the late nineties, the Hootniks and various other homeowners determined that would be in their interest to purchase from the farm owner the area across Brickyard Falls and Limestone Creek from their homes, so eight, eight homeowners, four couples purchased all four individual lots that you see directly across and perpendicular to the Hootnik lot that, that is shown with the home on it. Their intent was to make sure that no one built homes that would stare directly at them across from Brickyard Falls and Limestone Creek. And what has happened over time is that two of the homeowners, Tony Melzer, who recently sold her property, and the Andersons, which are on either side of the Hootniks, resubdivided and made their lots into one lot. The lots two over to the west of the Hootnik lot, the, the parent died, and those two lots, the lot that's across from Limestone Creek and the one that, that doesn't show as an individual lot, was sold to an individual homeowner, and the, the two, the four sons own the one, two, three, fourth lot in that is shown on this map, that is the westernmost lot next to and contiguous to Lot Two B. That lot is owned by the Friars, and in my opinion, it's landlocked, so who knows what's ever going to happen with that lot, but be that as it may, the Hootniks also did not resubdivide and connect their home lot with the lot directly across the street. They considered doing it, however, they never did it. And we were in the process of resubdivided and connecting the two lots when plans changed somewhat. Mrs. Hootnik decided she wanted to sell what is now Lot Two B to an individual or developer in order to finance what she hopes will be a studio or an accessory use building that she can do her, Sally's an artist and she wants to have a studio on lot, what's now Lot Two A. Originally, we wanted to subdivide the lot into Lot Two A and Two B and not connect it, if you will, to her main home, and the reason being that in the future she wants to sell the lot, she didn't want to have to sell it as one connected parcel, but having had preliminary discussions with the Planning Board, the issue of frontage came up, and secondarily, the issue of what the lot, which is now to be in a portion of Lot Two A, is zoned, and although it is part of the Broadrick subdivision, I understand the town's current position is that it's zoned agricultural and not zoned residential, which was a real surprise to my client since they've been paying residential lot rate for fifteen years and not agricultural rate. The county's been charging them as, as, charging the larger lot, the twenty-nine acre parcel, as residential, so you know, whether that's an important issue or not is for you guys and the town board apparently to decide. At this point, my client is willing to forego that issue at the moment because she wants to move forward with this subdivision, and so in order to make the current configuration comply with Town of Pompey zoning rules, we've left two hundred and fifty feet of frontage to Lot Two B, and we're resubdividing the house, the lot directly across the street, and a portion of the larger lot into one lot, which is now Two A and Two B. The Limestone Creek and there are sheer cliffs on both sides of Limestone Creek don't allow for access to Lot Two A from the current residence, so she needs a driveway off of Brickyard Falls Road to, to get to Lot Two A. And so, the map shows an easement for that driveway. I understand the town engineer had some concerns relative to the sixty-foot wide area where the proposed roadway might be. We can discuss that, too. Our, 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 there's, there's two phases to this, if you will. One is acquiring the subdivision, resubdividing the property in compliance with town rules, and secondarily, there'll be, Sally will be before the board with her architect and builder with building plans for her studio. With respect to Lot Two B on this map, that's going to be sold to a third party. We've had interest from developers, we've had interest from private individuals, we've had interest from contiguous landowners, and in each of those cases, no one would move forward with a contract unless the subdivision was approved by the town, and so we're doing this in multiple steps. The first step being the subdivision, the next step being a possible building permit for Sally on her studio, and the next step for the purchaser of the property, Lot Two B, depending on what they want to do, they may need his own change. They may not need his own change if it's a single residence, they may not need his own change if they're not planning on doing anything but adhering their property, this property to a property that they already own. But not one individual is willing to enter into a contract to purchase until the subdivision occurs, which is why we're coming to you first. And if anyone has questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Yeah, I want to add a couple things, I guess clearance or clarification. It is zoned farm, it's not zoned agriculture, it's just a term. Residence is an approved, a single, how, single-family house is, or single-family residence is an approved use within the farm district. The land, basically, that incorporates two B and part of Two A is located in an egg district, but they are not claiming an egg exemption. I do want to bring that out. The original, like where the house is currently located, that's Three A, those original lots are, as you stated, are forty, which in that area and closer to Manlius, one of the reasons it's zoned in R forty is the possibility of water or sewer accessibility. This land that is zoned farm, there currently is not that access from there further south in that area in Pompey, so that's some of the difference in the zoning there for clarification.
Thank you.
There. In looking, I also have a paper, want to keep looking at here, that's a big one, but also we had a discussion earlier, and this is to bring the board up to speed, that was basically myself, Bob, and Jamie talking about different things, and then some of the comments that went back to you, Diane, and then you came back with this current configuration. There is from the original Broadrick subdivision, which occurred in early nineties.
Ninety-four, yeah.
Yep, and I will come full disclosure on this, that that was just before I came on board, and the farmer that you referred to, that that land was bought from was my husband's, is my husband's uncle.
Oh, Phillip Smith is your husband's uncle?
Yes, yep, yeah, so anyway, full disclosure on that, but that was just before I came on the board, then also. But with configuration, even though you can't, I guess, jump the creek, but it does give her road frontage on Clearview Circle, but they are requesting right-of-way access off, off of Brickyard Falls. There is an existing easement that runs along, you can see it there. Maybe, yeah, can you trace out, Steve? That there is an existing easement that we do have the, the paperwork on there. I guess I question, when you say that that is not a usable right-of-way easement, I guess I'm kind of curious what your thoughts are, why we can't use that one that we need to sub one.
Sure. The, the twenty-foot right-of-way isn't significant, substantial in width for any kind of roadway. It's really a, I would say, a pedestrian easement. Twenty-five feet would be normally the minimum for a driveway. Twenty feet, the twenty feet that is on there, literally starts at the cliff that falls into the Limestone Creek and the waterfall, and comes twenty feet in from it. So, if, if we were to make that easement, the easement into Lot Two A, there would have to be a barrier of some significant setup in order to stop vehicles from falling over the cliff. And there's a easement, there's a restrictive covenant in the deed for that property that doesn't allow anything to be built or any kind of man-made structure to be placed on the cliff face. So it's a twofold issue. One is the danger of it being on the cliff edge for vehicular traffic without some sort of barrier or guardrail, and secondarily, I believe the deed contains a restrictive covenant that would not allow any kind of defacing of the brick face of the, of the area. So, I might be wrong, sorry, I might be wrong about this, but it might not be the brick face, the wa- the face itself, but it is where, you can tell by the topographical lines that the, the fall down or the the area does not really allow for a flat roadway to be placed there without it being near a sheer cliff. Is what I'm, what I'm telling you.
I have a question. What is the, it looks like a driveway coming up Clearwater Circle about nine o'clock and running down the west side of Lot Three A. What is that? I can't, it's too small to read on me if I have.
That's twenty-foot drainage.
Yeah, it's a drain adjustment for, yeah. If you, if you, if you look at where the house is located and you see the topography, the center line of the west branch of the Limestone Creek is noted down there. And if you, if you visualize the location of the house, there's a stone patio in front of the house, but then there's a sheer cliff within, I would say fifteen feet of the front of the house that drops directly down, so when you're looking at the other side, it's similar in configuration, even though the center line of the creek is at the edge of the lot, you need to go back, three-quarters of the way back in order to, in order to be at the top of the cliff. So, the distance between the center of the creek and the top of the cliff, you almost have to go back to the third or fourth topography line to be at the edge of the top of the cliff. There's a, it's quite a distance between the center line of the Limestone Creek, which goes in each direction approximately ten feet, and then the sheer cliff, if you will, which is covered with trees in many places, after the front face of the cliff, maybe the second or third topography line down from the house. And it's the exact same sort of a mirror image on the other side, so this is why the roadway being where the easement is currently placed was essentially put there as a walking path for those people that owned the four lots on the other side of Brickyard Falls so they could access their lots. And it was intended, honestly, that the owners on the one side where the houses are, we're going to own the four lots on the other side and make them into one lot each, so that, you know, they would own both sides and that each, each house would have a two-acre, one-point-six-acre lot across from them for screening and privacy purposes. That, the finalization of that didn't occur in many cases. They transferred title to the individual lot owners, and ownership is in each of the homeowners across from them, but they didn't finalize the process by resubdividing and adding the two lots together. And what has happened is, for example, where it says Lot Four now or formerly a Friar next to Sally, that lot was sold to somebody other than Friar, and it was never resubdivided, so the lot directly across from it is owned by the Friar Sons. And it's my opinion that that lot is landlocked right now, except for the twenty-foot right-of-way that grants access to it. Full disclosure, I've tried to buy that on behalf of Sally several times, and they have not been willing to sell it. So, there you have it. So, to finalize the question about why the twenty-foot right-of-way isn't in particular useful, it's a, it's a safety issue, and it's a, it's a potential issue with the restrictive covenants on the four lots. And, and I'm not sure that covenant also runs with the twenty-nine acres. If it doesn't, it would just be a safety issue. The other thing is, the way the land is right now, where the, where the current ingress and egress easement is placed on the map in the center of the two hundred and fifty feet of frontage, that land is relatively flat, and that land has been used for ingress and egress for a hunter that has hunted this, this land for a very, very long time. He has cleared out vegetation and, you know, the, the access there is, is not nearly as sloped and with a downward grade toward the Limestone Creek as the rest of this land is, as it approaches Limestone Creek, and Limestone Creek as the rest of this land is, as it approaches Limestone Creek and the. If you look at the land from an aerial view, you'll see that the land that's. Um, south of the right of way is nearly flat. Farmland without any trees, and the closer you get to the creek. There's mature forest and trees, um, I would call it a, um. Very old forest versus a new one, and as you move away from Limestone Creek. You have, you have new growth of walnut trees and small trees, but it's, I would say it runs from. South to north as, you know, flat farm, farmish land. To mid-growth, small walnut trees, and that's more or less where the sixty foot right of way is. And then as you approach the twenty foot right of way, you've got huge mature forest with some. Oak and maple trees and pine trees that I would say are might be two feet in circumference, so it's, the, the. Ability to make a road there would be very, very, very costly compared to. Any area traveling south.
Um, Steve, would you mind weighing in for everyone on the situation about the, um. The creek and passing over it?
Yeah, I think.
Challenges on that.
That, as far as access. You wouldn't be able to access. The other side of the lot. Because of the creek, right? Because of the steep banks and the cliffs, like you mentioned, so this would be restricted over on this side.
So, I, I mean, I thought there are, some people had thought there was an ability to possibly like, put a footbridge or something over. Um, the creek, but you had said that is not.
Yeah, that's very likely not. Practical to do that because it, there's a lot of regulation. That it would have to be complied with there, there's likely a floodway there as well, you can't fill in a floodway. A footbridge, you know. I guess it's possible. But I, I don't know the details of something like that, but certainly driving to the other side wouldn't be possible.
Yeah, the, the other piece of that Steve is, as I mentioned earlier, the lots that, um, that end. On the southern side that end to the north in the, in the threat of the creek. Have a, have a restrictive covenant on them that wouldn't allow any building or attachment to the cliff face on the south side.
Just because of this.
So, um, I think that the, the restrictive covenant on building on the cliff face. Would restrict any footbridge construction or bridge construction.
Okay.
Um, I have a question of Diane about, about the, um. Guess the goal of. Of lot two A. That. The, you know, the big, the big part that is, oh, I don't know, it's probably a couple, maybe four acres worth, right?
And so, sure.
And why so much of it is sought to be retained, because realistically. You wouldn't be able to build on it because it's all one lot, the other lot.
Right, so we're looking for an accessory use building. Which is allowed in a R forty setting, so basically, she, she's. She's interested in having a barn-like structure for a studio with a toilet in it, she's an artist, the light's good. Um, her current home is. Being used by her extended family at the moment due to COVID, and, and frankly, her family is growing, and for holidays and things, they need the full. Use of their home right now. Her studio is in the lower level of the house. It doesn't really allow for her to, um, you know, work and display her work. Um, in the way she would like to. So her current desire is to have an accessory use building on lot two A. Now, why it has to be so big is looking toward the future. In the event that it ultimately, a subdivision is built back here and lot two A gains access to a roadway. Sally might then want to subdivide two A and the piece that's attached to two A on the other side of the. Land from her home. And sell that separately, I mean. You know, this family, the, the owners, the Hootniks are in their, you know, sixties and early seventies. They have large extended family in the area, at some point, perhaps the son or daughter might want to move back to town from where they are now. And might want to convert, say, the studio into another single-family residence, this would all depend upon. You know, whether the town board would allow such a thing, whether there was, you know, this is ten years in the future, and no one knows what the future will hold. Um, but she doesn't want to place herself in a position where at any time this was sold, it had to be sold as it's. Configured in the map before you, she's planning for the future, whether that future unfolds, whether, you know. It's able to be re-subdivided again into two separate lots is really. A function of what, what's done with the larger lot. But we're doing this in stages and just trying to prepare for the future, we know that the future may or may not allow such a thing, but. As long as we're doing all this work, we decided that we would think forward and, and see. If it made sense to plan for the future, whether that eventuality occurs or not. Who knows, it's really up to the planning board and the town board if such a thing will be allowed in the future, it also. Depends upon whether lot two A, as it attaches to our forty, becomes an R forty lot. Or whether you have lots within the town that are designated to separate zoning items, I don't know the answer to that question. I assume that lot two A will become our forty when it's attached to an R forty lot, I, I don't know if you have. Contiguous lots or lots that are one lot that are two different, it seems like it would be very difficult to have them zoned differently, the same, the same lot zoned in two different ways, I don't know the answer to that, though.
Yeah, so I mean, there can be split, split lot zoning, um. But, you know, that's, like you said, that's a story for another day, right now, it would be, it would be a split lot zoning, obviously. Even if we were to go with something of this configuration or similar.
Right.
So Diane, what, um, is the lot size of the current lot three A? Off of Clearview Circle, and what is the current acreage on? The existing text parcel of one dot three?
Yeah, so it's one point six across the creek. It's, it's two, almost on the dime, it might be one eight nine for the house. So when you see that this is, uh, six point two nine, that's inclusive of one point six and one point eight or nine. So it's, it's really three point six. And then two A is almost three, but not quite. Which is why two A is designated as six point two eight, and it could be slightly smaller if that. Made the board happier, what we wanted to do. Was make sure that the new lot in the future, if it was for another day, as you say, ten years down the road, if somebody wanted to apply, that we didn't have a lot that was too small. For whatever zoning it was, so say the person, say eventually Sally. Ten, fifteen years down the road, their family decided that they wanted to sell their home. And sell the property across and that it would be more beneficial to have two different lots, they didn't want to make it so small that it wouldn't fit within whatever the current minimum lots. Was for an agriculture or farm lot, sorry. And I think it's either two and a half or five acres, I'm not sure which, you guys know better than I.
Two.
It's two acres?
Two acres.
So, so as long as, as long as, as long as there's going to be two acres near the. So the total that we would want in order to accommodate any kind of road or driveway would be about two and a half acres, so. Three, yeah, I think that's why we set it up this way, we wanted two, four, four acres on this side, and then a little extra for. Roadways, et cetera. So I think five acres total would be sufficient if, if it was necessary for you to. Approve this to make the portion of two A that's. A budding or could have but Brickyard Falls a little bit smaller, meaning move the, the line north, I think the engineer's comment was that. You know, they wanted to make sure that there were options as far as the location of the roadway. And so if, if this southern line of, the southernmost line of lot two A needed to be moved north for some reason, that's a possibility. This isn't written in stone. It would give, um, more acreage to the larger piece. And potentially. A different access point on Brickyard Falls Road.
Um, the, the piece that is a. The formerly landlocked piece, I'll call it.
Okay.
Um, what is that zoned right now?
Farm, farm. Indeed, all the. All the pieces. Th- this presumes that. Brickyard Fall, Broadbrook subdivisions didn't change the zoning on those lots, and. I'd like your advice, if you're willing to give it on. What my client's remedy is, at least going back a year to. What I would call the county's incorrect billing of theirs for the last fifteen years, I mean, I recognize that they're not going to get. Refunds go, going back fifteen years, but if this is an agricultural lot, we've. We've been paying residential taxes on it for fifteen years, and so we'd like to correct that if the town isn't, doesn't desire to. Uh, change the zoning, and I understand that. The position of the town board and this board is that it's agricultural or not agriculture, sorry, farm. So it's not been designated farm by the county.
Diane, let, let's leave, let's leave that, let's leave that part.
Okay, okay, sure.
I'd be glad to talk to you about that, I, I'm not sure, um, a lot depends, I think, on, a lot, haha, depends on what happens here.
Sure, absolutely.
I think that, um. I, I don't want to, I don't want to say too much right now, I do want other board members, you know, do you have more questions right now before I talk?
Yeah, are there concerns that the board members have about this plan? That, you know, we can address for you, um, it seems like. I, 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 I don't know how to feel about it, you guys have talked a lot about it and have some questions, have we answered all your questions, or? Do you need to have some more information provided by us to understand what we're up to?
What do you think, Board?
Well, my confusion is when you start talking about, uh, she wants a studio. But maybe later on, it'll be a house.
Yeah, so ignore that, it might not ever be a house, it might be a studio forever. Um, clearly. If we get the accessory use building built as a studio. And it conforms to everything that the building code allows for an accessory building and nothing more. Then that's the way it is at this moment, if the future, if fifteen years from now, somebody wants to do something, uh, if the estate of. David and Sally Hootnik want to re-subdivide, they're going to have to go before that board and see if they can get whatever permits are necessary, but right now. You know, my job as the attorney for the applicant is to, is to pass the current situation, and perhaps I've been. Too bold in describing why we're doing things the way we're doing and why we want certain land amounts the way we want them. Because it's, the fact of the matter is, what we get approved here today is all we get approved for, and fifteen years down the road. The board might not approve anything else that they want to do, and they'll have to live with it, and I've told my clients that. So I guess I'm telling you why we want to have five acres total on this side of the stream and the falls. It's, it's, it's forward thinking, um, but it doesn't necessarily mean that plan will ever come to fruition, it's just in case it could, that we're doing it the way we're doing it now, so that we don't foreclose opportunities. For example. We didn't just add a half an acre on to the one point six acres, so we had a two acre parcel. And that might never qualify for a, 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 a home, so right now, the accessory use building won't have some features that a home would require. It won't allow, the town won't allow for that, but if we don't plan for it now, it could never happen, even if a future board might approve it. If you understand what I mean.
Well, I understand that, but I feel our job, um, is, in decisions we make is also forward looking.
Sure.
As to what's going to happen on that lot, so the decisions we make today will have an impact fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty years from now, so.
No doubt about it.
Yeah, so.
I'm trying to be honest without foreclosing my client's opportunity to do what she wants to do, and. I think that, that the open communication is really what is necessary to everybody to do their job, um, I think that. You have a favorable opportunity or at the board or the town to, you know. Disallow something that you don't want to have happen, and. You know, it looks to me, if I look at this large parcel in the center, this twenty-nine acres, it's surrounded by beautiful homes. Almost all four sides of it, I mean, the farm that once was, um, Susan's uncle's farm. Um, it, it, it was, it was sold to landowners with, you know, the opportunity to build beautiful residences on large plots, some of them are. You know, as small as a couple acres, some of them are large, like five or ten acres, and. Um, I, I'm trying to keep this sort of forward-thinking plan in conformance with what is surrounding the land that's there now. Um, on all four sides of the twenty-nine acre parcel, there are large estates, large homes. And, and really no farms or any other farmland or, um, so it's my thinking.
The, the original farm stud has had horses and beef cattle. Um. I guess on the twenty-nine acres to say all four sides of housing, um. I don't know about all four sides, because on the most northern part, there's also, um. A trust down in there that there are no houses, and it is vacant land on the north side going in towards Manlius. And, yeah, there is still open going up to the original farm stud, so, um, there are homes there. I guess my concern is the design of this lot. It, we'll just call it what it is, it's a flag lot, I mean, you look at it, it's a boot, but it's also a flag lot, and. You know, on the code, um, as far as what a ratio is of width versus. You know, on the code, um, as far as what a ratio is of width versus length. Um, you know, with the ratio is this doesn't fit our code. And it's, I think that. With the sixty foot there left that for a potential road that. We're being told that that's where the road's gonna go and it leaves us no option as far as. The town's decision, if a road went in for a development that. I would tend to listen to our engineers on best placement for a road. And I think we're being extremely limited with this design, I understand. From your side of it of trying to make sure that if you wanna subdivide later on, I understand. Um.
So basically, yeah, go ahead.
But I guess my other thing though is that the, the hard part. Is you wanna take care of yourselves and then, and sell, and the others, you've got developers that are interested and. Um, okay, all of a sudden you got a housing. In tucked in behind it, how does it all fit together too? Um, you know, we've seen it before, sometimes, you know, like, oh, that looks good and all of a sudden something else comes right in behind it and it's like, oh, I wish we knew that. Ahead of time, cuz conceptually, um, you know, you get a chance to do it right once and.
Sure, so.
Nice to do one, so.
Sure, so what I would say to you Sue on those two issues are, number one. We, we don't need it to be six acres, we could have it be five and change. So we could take an acre off of it and make the sixty foot right of way um wider than sixty feet. Say a hundred and twenty feet. Um, that wouldn't be an issue at all, what I would tell you from, and I'm not an engineer, trust me. But I've walked this land, I can't tell you how many times now, and um, the closer you are, the further you are. Uh, south. The better off you are from a flat land standpoint, from a road standpoint, the less excavation you're gonna need to do. Um, and the reason that the twenty-foot ingress egress easement is placed where it is. Is that's currently where there's a chain across um an entryway to the lot. And that's the flattest area of the property. In, in that area with the least amount of trees and. Other flora and fauna that need to be knocked away in order to build a driveway of some type. On the issue of the flag lot, um. You know, it, I don't know how to attach it to the main. Property and avoid the kind of look of a flag lot. I also want to tell you that two of the purchasers that are interested, one is. Interested in building a single family dwelling, so they wouldn't need a zoning change, and they're gonna be looking at this on Saturday. And the other potential purchaser other than developer is an individual that is contiguous to the lot. He's just gonna add it to his property, whether he actually re-subdivides and adds it is another story, but he won't buy it without access. Off Brickyard Falls because he has the same kind of issue from a. He has the same kind of issue because of topography and is unable to. Cross into this property from his without going through a gully. So, um. If, there are canyons and gullies and, and various, um. Types of prohibitions to getting from A to B. Um, that surround this because of the falls and because of Lionstone Creek and. Um, so everybody's trying to access these pieces. Without running through those, um, you know, natural. Gullies and issues. So, um, I, I.
I mean, try to um, give some guidance, I think one of the, the, the things, if eventually. You want to, um, somehow you're able to convince the next developer if a road comes in and you get road frontage. Um, the most acreage that you would need on, on the um. Farm, which is what both would this. Other than that clear, the one that faces clear water, all the rest of it is farm, uh, you would need only two acres.
Right.
Two hundred, um. Frontage of two hundred square feet, no, two hundred feet.
Right.
And so the ability to. I'm not saying this, I'm just bringing this up to the board's attention, to shrink this lot. Um, you know, both east-west and, and north-south is. Um. And, and still possibly um give this person what they would, you know, desire is something that. Is entertainable, um, Steve, you had some. Recommendation on that, I believe.
I think Diane was mentioning that it would be possible to shift this lot line north.
Yes.
Um. You know, maybe it would be best to shift this lot line north and. And this one west, to shrink both of these.
Okay.
Because we just don't know if this is the best location for, for a road connection here.
Right.
Which is.
And I don't know what the factors that you consider for that are, so.
So, could we have a, could we have a discussion just amongst the board and let the applicant go on mute for a little bit?
Absolutely, sure.
Because I see this as a non-conforming lot, so I don't really know where we're headed with this lot, um, or how we could approve it. And I, I know what the other board members are thinking, um.
And which, what, what are you thinking about as non-conforming?
Well, two A does not have two hundred foot of frontage.
Right, so right now, what, the way that this plan is set forth is that they're planning on connecting it to the Clearwater lot in its entirety.
Right, and it's rated by a stream, so I mean technically, maybe it still wouldn't be two hundred foot of frontage on Clearwater, even though they have a different zoning.
Uh, no, you, it would just, it would just be um continuing as part of that lot. So, so that, that in and of itself wouldn't be a non-conformity. The, the idea of it being.
A lot line adjustment.
Well, it, it would technically be a lot line adjustment, except that we've got the, the other lot that's being. Um.
Well, that would be very, right, so, I mean, so you're gonna technically have two hundred foot of frontage for two B. But it's, is that a conforming lot, just?
No, no, that, that's, that's the, that would be, that's more of the problem now because of it being the flag lot. Right, so.
The parts in front of the horse, so to speak.
I.
You know, you gotta build the road first.
Well. That, that's a, a question. I, I, I mean, I, I, I understand that this is confusing and, and um, we spent some time in it. Um. Prior to now, Bob, Bob Rodriguez and Sue and Steve and I did look at it. They, I think the concern.
And you put the road in, so it becomes a conforming lot.
Yeah, but you put the road first, you don't put the lot there first. I mean, that's my world.
Well, well, right now, the, because they're planning on connecting it to the Clearwater. That lot would be conforming and then the bigger lot would be non-conforming because of it being a flag lot, kind of, I mean, I think in order. That this board can make, you know, findings in that regard. Of how this can possibly be made better, and I think what Steve was saying is if you, let, forget what's in front of you, if you shrink. Um, move the south, the south line north and the east line west significantly. And you still have enough eventually, if there's a road that goes in that connects. They would have to come back for. Another subdivision to make it appropriate road frontage, so see this line that says five seventy-eight forty-two.
Uh huh.
If it got shrunk all the way back to two hundred, cuz that's all you need, or something like that. And then. Because our engineer has said it's not a good idea, and I'm sure this board agrees. To um prevent or, or to, to pigeonhole the board into where this road is gonna go. That, that you shrink it um up as well, north. Right, so now you have something that. Has a lot more options for future development and.
Yeah, and just to that point, just to add on to that, Jamie, I mean, we don't know at this point because we don't have enough information to, to know if it's even feasible. But it at least allows the opportunity to determine if it is. This is the hamstring, because there's only, this is the only where, location you're approving it. And maybe the better location, if it was uh able to be done. Would be here, and then we would have a big problem. Cuz.
But she, and she did say that's where the existing uh chain is and driveway in that the Hunter accesses and. If I understood her, she said that that was the best route in right now, so if they. Secure that as an easement for their access, that eliminates that potential. For a road to go there.
No, it doesn't.
No?
No. It's, it's just, it's just, you know, if, if. If it were, it could be a relocatable easement, right, at reasonable option and/or it would be a non-exclusive easement.
Well, I think we need to see that, Jamie, I think she needs to come back with a plan that shows what the future could look like. You know, to put some work into this, what are the site distances? As though, at the very least, I still have a problem, though, to tell you the truth, but.
This is a town road, right?
Yes, Brickyard Falls is a town road.
Yep. I think she should talk to Tom herself about, you know, where a driveway cut would be workable. Um, you don't wanna plan something as far as access goes and then have time say that's not gonna work site distance wise. As long as, um. The applicant realizes in their future plans for this uh lot two A that, um. You more, the more you shrink that, the more, uh. You're going to have to add land across the creek. Um, if you, if you subdivide it again in the future sometime. To be able to uh get a minimum of a two acre lot.
And, and that's, I, you know, I agree, um, I agree with Dan, and I, I think from a planning standpoint. Um, that a little more work needs to go in so that what this board is doing in, in looking forward isn't. We don't care so much about the lot two A, right, eventually having two acres and having access, you know, from some future road. What this board should be um talking about and caring about is. The twenty-six acres or what is that over there, that, that's, that is probably, even if it's not in right away. But someday, when all of us are, you know, in our rocking chairs, is maybe developed, no matter who buys it now, so.
What we're looking at is an example of that, I mean, we got technically, I mean, if they didn't hook into Clearwater, those are four undevelopable, unbuildable lots.
Oh, I, I don't care about those, that, we can't do anything about those.
I mean, that planning is all I was getting at.
Oh, very, very poor, I don't know how that happened.
That's gonna be a Tuskay webinar one of these days.
Yeah, that's very strange, I, I, I understand that probably what was going to happen is they said they were gonna connect them and they didn't, and it should have been all part of the same plan. In the same way that we're saying, hey, you know, let's make this part of. An appropriate, you know, evolution of a, of a, of a plan. That can takes into account what realistically is probably gonna happen back there.
And right now, her lot on the south side of the creek doesn't hook into her lot on the north side of the creek, correct?
Right, but she's proposing that it would, that it will now. And then, and then what she's saying is down the road, uh, maybe we'll lop off that one on the other side of the creek again, cuz it's, it's in the, a zoning district. That has the appropriate frontage, and if we ever get road frontage of somebody, if somebody, and this is like way down, like now you got a developer who's building a road. This is very far down the line, would allow her to connect to her, her lot, which is gonna be plenty big enough. Um, but that would be up to her to make sure that whatever contract she gets into says, hey, when there's a road, you gotta, you gotta give me the frontage.
So then our focus is really to be in making sure that that remains a conforming property. You know, in the spirit of the, of the, of the, um, of our zoning.
Yes, reasonably developable, exactly.
Which may mean at least, uh. Well, if two acre zoning is, uh. Two hundred foot of frontage. You know, in a buildable house and everything, you're gonna. You know, what kind of depth would we be looking at for the two A from Brickyard?
Um, probably, it would probably have to be at least two fifty by two hundred road frontage, right?
What, what do we, does our zoning say what the?
Yes, yeah, just what I just said.
Okay.
Yeah. So under section one forty-four dash thirteen in our code book, section B, design standards. Talks about excessive depth in relation to the width shall be avoided, a proportion of two and a half to one. Or excuse me, yes, two and a half to one will normally be considered maximum.
What, Dan, are you getting it, if, if someone were to build a house on Brookyard Falls?
On two B.
Right. And it would be, it would still have aspects of, a, a bit of aspects of a flag, but if it got shrunk. And shrunk in both directions. Then you'd have less of an issue.
But then would she have, so the, would two A, she would be able to build an accessory building with a bathroom? That's a question for Bob.
That's a Bob question.
It's codes.
And I, I, I would be surprised if that could be, but, you know, I'm not the code expert.
I'm confused, how do you get the two A from her house?
You can't.
You can't now.
Well, two.
Right, so how is it a conforming lot if you, you can't build a bridge that's not allowable? So, how, how can you tie that into Clearwater if you can't get there?
She, she was going to. So it's a, it's a paper, it, on paper, it's all one. It's all one, and there's a lot of, there are lots in the world where you can't get to the other side, so it's one lot on paper. But we're trying to make it a, make it practical. Um, as well, so she would, she would take her little driveway, she'd take a driveway easement, that's what she's trying to do there.
Right, but you need to do that before you can talk about this accessory building. You need to put the road in, I, I, I'm with Dan, I, it's like the cart before the horse here, but that's my.
Can I ask a question, uh, what is the total frontage on Brickyard Falls? The combined of two A and two B right now? Well, or two, two B, the way it's shown on this man, I can't read it on my uh map here.
Yeah. Um.
Looks like it's about two seventy.
Yeah, I think, I think it's two sixty-eight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe a little less, it looks like it pies in, so.
Yeah, it could be a little bit less than that.
So, yeah, I mean, so that, back to Bob Rodriguez is, you know, what would be allowed with just an easement, you know, for a driveway? What kind of accessory building is in our code?
I have to have, I'm trying to get a clear understanding, what she wants for accessory building, because is she going to have power in there? Is she going to put water? Is she going to put a new well in? Is she going to put a septic in there? Now it's not an accessory building anymore.
Right.
So a barn is an accessory building, a garage is an accessory building.
Toilet. She's talking about a toilet.
In terms of our planning, though, that, that's all codes, that's not under our peruse.
Well, we're just asking the question, you know, to know, understand what we're.
And sure, sure, and to understand, like, what she's trying to do, it, it may be, it would be helpful for her if this is not.
Right, exactly. So she understands what she can and can't do.
I mean, she'll get power. It could probably have heat. But she's not going to have a bathroom. She's not going to have plumbing, I don't think. I don't know.
She was talking about wanting plumbing, so that means a septic.
Yeah. I mean, she's talking about plumbing, she's talking about a mini kitchen in there, and possible sleeping quarters.
So where do you draw the line?
We haven't finished having this conversation yet. I, I talked to her months ago before this started. And I have not talked to her since, and Jamie Sue and I just picked up on this a couple of weeks ago. And we need to carry this farther, you know, talk to her more about what you could, you know, what it, what the accessory building is going to really have in it. But you're right, I mean, so you start adding all these things in, it's not an accessory building anymore.
No.
Maybe we should bring Ms. Finnegan back on. I mean, I guess that's a, that would be a threshold question. If, if an accessory building can't, of the nature that you want here can't be built, then you'll be doing something, you know, there's a lot of, a few hoops to jump through.
Is she going to proceed with this whole thing?
Right.
Because originally, she talked about putting a bridge over the creek to get up to this building, and I, and I told her way back when that that's not going to be feasible. And that's, that was the last I heard of until the other day when we talked.
Which doesn't, this studio fall under, you know, loose definition, but a home occupation? But accessories.
Still, it's still an accessory structure, which, you know, there's an accessory use, and then there's an accessory structure.
Whether it comes back in the site plan then too, or not, but, yeah. Anyway, any comments, Roy?
Oh, no, I'm not familiar at all with the topography there, and my map here doesn't show the whole thing. So I, I guess I'd have to see it personally, I think.
Okay, I, I will say, I called up under Bing Maps, and that satellite view coming down, it does a fairly good job of actually showing the expanse of the, the falls and the creek, excuse me, right behind her house. And then you can obviously zoom out that there's a fair amount of, as she said, hardwoods and trees, and then part of the two B lot is also open pasture that has been maintained and mowed. On the map that's in front of us, basically where the topography lines start to pick up, that is definite hillside, and it's all wooded, and then the floor that it goes, then it turns into your grassland, if that helps some of the people.
I, I, I have a question. Why, why is this in front of us tonight? If we're asking these questions?
Because there is an active application that has been submitted to the town.
But if, but with all these questions that haven't been answered by the code enforcement officer, it, it's not a complete application to present to us.
I, I think that be, because this has sort of been kicking around for a while, we wanted to get, we wanted to get feedback, because, you know, and, and point people in the right direction, and maybe that's what we're doing, is, is making a list of, of items that are of concern. I, I want to just kind of throw, throw this out. This is for discussion. I promise I'm not coming on one side or the other of, of anything. But if, if, if this applicant came in and said, I want to join, you know, my, my little landlocked piece and that piece, and I want to add a little bit on there, maybe I want to add a hundred by a hundred. And that's going to be my lot. And, and by the way, what I want to do is have, you know, an easement, because that's so hard to reach, and you know, I'm just going to grant myself an easement over the rest of it. Would, what would we say about that? Like, that's the lead, right?
She owns both parcels, Jamie. She can do a lot line adjustment. Have to own them. She just needs to move a lot line.
Well, she wants to.
A lot line adjustment is, also, is also at the discretion of
Codes.
Codes, right, and they could even still bring it in, and say, okay, so I would think that this probably would be something always that codes would bring in, because of the amount of acreage that's left.
But I would suggest, you know, so the more I look at this, I'm thinking if I, just purely as a planning board member, and I was thinking to the future, and I see those landlocked lots, I would want the road built so that makes those lots conforming, or at least gives them access, gives them road frontage, as opposed to being landlocked forever theoretically.
Well.
You know, that to me would be planning. The road should be on the north side of the property line, not on the south side.
I, yeah, I, I hear that. I, I would have a different feeling about that, which is the, that's their problem, and I don't think this applicant should try to solve it. And if those are landlocked, ultimately, the only thing that's going to happen is they can sell to whoever this developer is.
Well, they're likely at the hands of our planning board that preceded us, and to me, it'd be righting a wrong.
I mean, it's, it's quite a, it would be quite a, quite a heavy lift, I think, to make this applicant solve that, which those people created themselves, but it's one.
Well, I'm just, you know, we're just talking.
We're talking, we're just talking. Yeah, agreed, we're just talking.
You know, I don't like the idea of landlocked lots, but yet just devil's advocate that, you know, people hunt and slan, and we know that these are forested lots, and they've got that easement, and who's to say, well, the charity told us that there's a hundred that goes in there, so they could stay forever wild, and these people just use them for recreational purposes and just walk into them, so.
So if somebody wanted to, Sue, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if somebody wanted to build a driveway in that twenty-foot easement, which you could do theoretically, you could certainly.
Theoretically, yeah.
Give yourself room to get a driveway in to access the Friar lot, for example, the furthest one away.
Yep.
Bob Rodriguez give that landowner a permit to build a house on it? If he, if the landowner went and built a twenty-foot driveway, you know.
All the way there.
On.
Yep.
No, no, we can't, because it doesn't have road frontage.
Well, that's.
It would need a variance.
Okay. So these are recreation lots, I guess is what we would call them.
Yeah, they're not approved building lots. It's too bad the map doesn't reflect that.
Yeah, it's a little misleading, you know, if you were.
Yeah, yeah, it is. I, and when I first looked at this, this, it really threw me for a loop. I'm like, what is all those landlocked parcels? And how did they get that way? But I thank Diane for, for explaining it, and you know, I, I don't know about Ingles, I, whatever that now or formerly, why, they certainly should sell it to Sally Hoopna, because they're not going to be able to do anything with it, ever. Except sell it to maybe the developer who's going to buy the five acres.
Yep.
Yep. This is kind of a side note. Did, did anybody actually drive into Clearwater Circle besides me?
Yeah, I did.
How'd you like pulling out of there? The site distance toward Manlius?
Um, I was going the other way, so.
Okay, in, in just in, in terms of planning, like, that got put in there, but honestly, the way Brickyard Falls Road drops down towards Manlius, the site distance toward Manlius is extremely limited. And, you know, you, you're just thinking, planning, like, who put that there? Who designed it? And I don't want to see something like that happen again, and have our hands tied of any kind of access being that limited to make a bad, a bad intersection. So it's.
Do we ask Tom to look at this and see if, see what his thoughts are on putting a road in that area?
I think, I think that certainly should be on the, on the list of things. So right now, we haven't, we have an application. What we've got now are two flag lots. New lot two A that is a flag lot off of Clearwater, and this two B, which is a flag lot off of Brickyard. Is there some configuration that would be acceptable to this board? And how do we get to that point? And what information do we need to gather to get to that point?
Uh, this is Kevin again, the, the, the naysayer, is that I think we need to be careful about this board doing the designing of a site plan. Our, our job is the site plan review. It should be presented to us after the applicant, the applicant's attorney, the applicant's engineer looks at our code and makes a determination what works best for them, that falls within the code, and then present that to us. To come to us, which I think is an incomplete application, and to ask us to figure out how to fix it. I'm not sure that's really our role, and that's my opinion.
I would agree with Kevin.
Jamie, I don't know, maybe to go back and maybe touch on their first attempt, what they did, and then how this one was revised based on some of the comments and interpretations, I guess.
Well, the, yeah, so the other, other one was going to need variances on road frontage.
Because basically, they took lot two A and went right to Brickyard Falls Road, so that lot two A had two hundred feet road frontage, and then left the sixty feet straight in to two B.
Right, right.
Well, honestly, I mean, I don't have, I hear Jamie when she says we've got two flag lots here, but I mean, I don't have a problem with the, the flag lot that's two A and three A, as long as we've got the frontage on Clearwater. But I do have a problem with the flag lot for twenty, for two B. So kind of along the lines of what Jamie was suggesting, if they could configure this in a way where she had the two hundred foot of road frontage for twenty, for two B, and as Steve suggested, move the southern line north of two A, and the west line further west, to kind of squeeze it up towards the creek with a driveway access easement. That would look a lot better to me than what's sitting here right now.
And, and going back to what, what Kevin and Dan were saying, you know, that's, that's an, an option, but in order to, for this board to move forward with such an option, what else would you want to know? You would want to know perhaps site distances. You would want to know where a, a road reasonably could go in for the future development of that big lot, twenty-two, twenty-five acres. So that a reasonable decision could be made that, that, that the rest of two, of two B can be developed at some point in time.
Well, I, like what Kevin's saying, it's not our job to advise. I mean, so we're having a conversation. She could take advantage of what she's hearing. I mean, I certainly want to have a developable property, so I would take the advice to heart and make sure that whatever's left is going to comply with, you know, what the regulations are for site distance, uh, to have access. But, you know, that's really up to the applicant. I think for me, it's two B needs to be conforming, needs to meet the code, the spirit of the code, and and with two A, I think we need to see the whole lot then. We need to see the lot on Clearwater, and we need to see the frontage on Clearwater.
Not sure what you mean about that, because I think that's on here, isn't it?
I can't, well.
Oh, can you, can you scan that down? Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, let me blow that up.
A hundred and forty-nine point eight seven, which on Clearwater, but I guess my question is, when that was subdivided, that, what did they use? Because none of them have two hundred.
Are they scored there?
Doesn't, doesn't R forty require two hundred?
Um, yeah, so this is R forty, and it requires a hundred and fifty.
There you go.
Okay, yeah.
So how does that affect it, Jamie, that if the lots combined, but yet part of it's zoned R forty, and then part of it's zoned egg? The R forty.
It's, well, in, in this, yes, right now, the R forty would, would control, because it can, it's all one lot. It's got its road frontage. It's got it, it can only have a single family structure on it. It's already got it. I suppose they could demolish that single family structure and try to put it on the, you know, further back, you know, but they never can. So, because it can't go over the creek, and that's the only access. So.
And the fact that we're adding land to an R forty lot, I would think would be desirable.
Right, in, in and of itself.
Well, not for like another house.
No, 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 no.
Desirable if it's left in its natural state.
Right.
Or, or an allowable accessory structure.
Right, right.
Which is, which is basically what is proposed. It's just that once you start borrowing land from that, that lot that has the frontage on Brickyard Falls is where it starts to get problematic. Right?
Right, for sure. And then you got all these landlocked pieces that make it just that much worse, but that's another story.
Don't want to make, you don't want to make a situation worse, and I think that's what we're doing here. It, it seems to me that if, you know, the, the applicant is listening, obviously listening to this, that there may be some options, but there's more information that this board would want to make sure that what, what's left has options attached to it. And one of the things that Steve talked about was, we need to have options on where a road would go. And, and the way that it's configured right now is foreclosing those options. Does anyone disagree with that? I'm chatting away.
I concur with that. I also concur with Dan and Kevin that we're basically charged with making sure the applications, when they come to us, that they do. we're basically charged with making sure the applications, when they come to us, that they do adhere to the codes and guidelines of the town of Pompey. Yes, people can take our comments and, and fine tune things. Um, but I think more work definitely needs to be, to be done on this and have more definitive answers for us.
I agree. Yeah, I agree. The roadway issue is really her issue. Um, I, I just wanna, uh, as a board member, wanna make sure 2B is as close to a conforming lot as possible. If she subdivides it, um, it's, uh, it's, it's on her as to whether or not she ends up with something that's developable, you know? Um, so my recommendation would be that she gets somebody involved to tell her whether or not it's feasible site distance wise to put a road in. But that's not on us, in my opinion.
I agree with that, too.
So Karen, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and I know first time in and so on, but do you have any reactions or comments for us?
I would like to see another scenario. I mean, I'm usually, you know, um, I guess my engineering background, you know, you have one, two, or three, and what works best. So, um, I, I, I guess clarity and maybe some other options. And I know there's probably not a lot of options here, but it's hard to make a decision right with this information, I feel.
And, and I have a problem with us picking options. Uh, I, I think the applicant needs to come with what they are looking to do. Again, after they've sought the advice of counsel and an engineer, that this is what we want to do, and then this board makes a determination as to whether or not that in our site plan review, that's doable. But, uh, if, if they come to us and we pick option one, or option two, or option three, then the burden is on us that if it doesn't work, um, you know, then, then we have some responsibility. And I think our job is to, um, receive a completed application, which would be what is it they want to do? And right now, they don't know, it doesn't meet with the codes the way it sits in front of us. So therefore, they need to go back to the drawing board. So that's, that's my opinion.
Right?
Yeah, I agree. I, um, I didn't get a map in the mail, so I'm, I'm a little out of touch here. Um, and I don't see the whole thing on my screen, but I'm learning more about it as, uh, you, you folks talk. No, it seems like a doable thing, but we'll need to know more about it.
And I agree with Kevin, whoever the applicant is that actually builds the road, they're the ones that'll be scrutinized, you know, much more thoroughly. And hopefully, you know, if they don't have the options to make it work, then they're gonna be out of luck.
Mm-hmm.
Is that enough, Jamie?
Yes, I, it's a very thorough discussion. Um, the applicant, um, is still on, right? Is Diane still on?
I'm still here.
Okay.
Um, I just have a quick question about what's non-conforming about Lot 2B. It has 250 or more feet of frontage on Brickyard Falls. Is it a width to depth issue? Or, I don't understand.
Um, yes, it, it is. It's the, it's correct. Um, I'd have to find that part of the code about.
Yeah, is it 2.2.5 to, um, to one? Yeah, so, so basically, when we spoke with an engineer about that issue, um, width and depth, are you saying it's, is it the smallest width to the longest depth? Is that the way it is? I'm a little confused about why, I mean, I don't mind, and my, and my owner doesn't mind making 2A smaller. Also don't mind moving the roadway anywhere somebody thinks it's best placed based on a review of the land space. I just don't understand how, um, you know, I, I understand it looks like a flag, and that's why we're calling it a flag lot. But, um, a developer that wanted to develop 2B, if they could put the road wherever you guys wanted it, um, or if a, an individual owner wanted to purchase the property and develop it for a single family dwelling somewhere on the land, um, they would just need a driveway, um, because they would have 250 feet of frontage. So, uh, and a developer would just need a roadway if he wanted to do a multiple, a bunch of lots. And so, I'm unclear about how the, how 2B is not conforming. As far as the issue of later re-subdividing, any contract that we enter into with a third party on Lot 2B will have a requirement in it that if a roadway is constructed, that Lot 2A, um, has access to that roadway and is allowed to connect to it. So, I mean, that's just for the future. Um, as far as the accessory building goes, anything that, um, is allowed in an accessory building is all we want. If indeed septic is necessary, because a toilet is allowed. But we don't want a kitchen, we don't, we only want so that Sally doesn't have to go back down the road and around to her house to go to the bathroom during the workday. So she wouldn't need a sink and a toilet, um, in the accessory building. And it was my basic understanding that as long as there was no kitchen and no bedroom, it's gonna be a lofted, uh, building, really an open space with windows and a toilet in it, um, so that she could use it to paint. So, uh, whether that could in the future be converted into another type of building would really be up to whether or not a road was built or whatever. But strictly conforming to current code, we'll design, um, the lot in any way that the board would approve. And the reason I guess we're having this meeting is to ameliorate or alleviate any concerns that might be had. Uh, trust me, on these, on these non-conforming uh, lots, we tried to purchase them, um, on a number of occasions. I've, I've met with them, they're just not interested in selling. And, and why they're not interested in selling, I have no idea. Maybe they think in the future, if the larger lots develop, they'll get more money from a developer, which is certainly their right. Um, we currently own, you know, whatever, the 29 acre lot and several other lots. And we're just trying to do for the next, say, 10 years with them, what are, what our preference is. And I know your job is to plan for the future. But I guess what my position would be is, as long as whatever we're doing is conforming with the current code, um, I don't understand what, I, I guess your, your, your thoughts for the future would prevent you from voting to allow it. So, I'm willing.
Can I, can I just jump in?
Absolutely.
You're, you're all over the place here. You're saying that, um, you know, if it meets the code, then, then we should approve it. But then you say where, you know, for us to tell you where to put the driveway, that's not our role to tell you where we want the driveway. The driveway needs to be addressed by the highway superintendent, um, the engineer to determine the appropriate location for the driveway. It's not what we want as a board. It's not like, oh, we want the driveway here, we want it there. Where would the driveway meet the requirements for a driveway? Um, so those are things you need to come to us with, not ask us to figure out for you where you want the driveway, or whether, and if you want an accessory building, there are, you can go to the, uh, to Bob, and Bob will tell you what an accessory building is, what the requirements are, and present that to us and say, this is what we're gonna put down. And if it meets site requirement regulations as we understand them, then we would say yes or no, or it needs to be changed, or it needs to be, you know, bigger, smaller, a bush planted in front of it. But we can certainly help you with, um, letting you have some questions. But it's not our role to determine where to put the driveway, just.
I, I've got it, I've got it, Mr. Coysen. And, and I'm not trying to avoid my responsibility. In fact, we've changed this map at least four times now in response to various concerns. And we don't mind changing it another four times if in the end, we provide you with a comfort level that allows you to approve it. All I'm saying to you is that I wanna, um, I wanna conform to the code. And right now, it appears the planning board believes that the two lots as presented do not. And what I'm trying to, and what I'm, go ahead.
Yeah, it's, it's the two to one, uh, two and a half to one. Um, that is, is the issue primarily.
Smallest, is it the smallest point? I, I just, the two and a half to one, it's such an unusually shaped lot to begin with. It looks like a big T with a fat head on it. Um, if it's two and a half to one, it's certainly never gonna be a square. Um, it, it, it doesn't allow itself to be a square because of, it was like a remainder of property that was unsold that my client bought. And I do understand that it requires 250 feet of frontage. And I don't have a problem shrinking 2A both north and west, um, at all. I, I'm happy to put the driveway wherever site distances are. But, but I guess what we understood, and, and please forgive me if I've made an incorrect assumption, was that the, the subdivision needed to be done before we, we got a building permit and went through site plan review. And it seems like we're adding site plan review to this subdivision request. Um, and I don't, if that's the way we do it, I'm fine with that. I just thought that the, the role of the builder and the architect would be to get a site plan when the building was going to begin. And that, in, in order to begin the building, we needed a lot that it could be put on. I thought that was what we were doing here.
But you brought up, you, you brought up the accessory building. We didn't bring that up. So you brought those issues to us.
Yeah, I mean, we're just trying to caution you to, if you've not fit your plans, make sure you're subdividing in a way that's going to allow you to do what you'd like to do with your future plans.
So the only issue that we had from the perspective of whether this was a conforming lot, meaning 2A, had to do with whether we could access the property, um, without coming across down the, down the sheer cliffs over the, you know, we, we know there can be no bridge, and in an honesty, I don't remember asking for one. Um, but it, it's fine, we know there can be no bridge. So we recognize that the only way to access Lot 2A would be via, uh, an easement at a driveway. Um, how that inter, in, interplays with the location of a, a roadway or, or Lot 2B honestly is dependent on, um, what the planning board is most comfortable with. If, if there's some way to make this conform by shrinking Lot 2A or the portion of Lot 2A that's within the larger lot, we're happy to make that happen. It, we can take a whole acre, maybe even more, maybe an acre and a half out of this. But if that doesn't, um, if that doesn't conform with the width and length two and a half to one because of the strange configuration, then we might need a variance in that regard. There's really no, you know, even as the lot sits without a portion of, of it, it doesn't conform, does it? I mean, is the width and length, if, if it's the smallest width with the largest length, the lot already doesn't conform. If you take any piece that we're taking out of the larger 29 acre parcel out of it, let's just say we want to add the 1.6 acre and do a lot line adjustment and, and call it one lot. Over, and, and, and leave the 29 acres as is and, and, and never do anything with it. Maybe she'll build her, um, her accessory building on the 1.6 acre lot. Does Lot, does, does the 29 acre lot that's now known as 2B conform width and length wise?
It's already, it's already there. It's all, it's an existing lot. How it got there, I, yeah, so it, as it sits like today.
Yeah.
It's a conforming lot.
Okay, so as long as we don't touch it, it's conforming. But the second we touch it, it becomes non-conforming. And the only way to make it conform is to make sure it has 250 feet of frontage, which we've done. And.
200.
New lot, pardon me?
Two hun- 200 feet.
But realistically, you can't lop any of the rest of it off, so it would be whatever it is currently.
So, so the part of it that's non-conforming is the width and length. And that is already non-conforming, but it's conforming because it's there. But when we try to touch it at all, it becomes non-conforming for width and length, is what you're saying.
We are.
I don't know, I mean, the lot exists as it is, as a 29 acre lot, as a part of the Broadbrook subdivision, and it's what we own.
Well, if you have 200 feet on Brickyard, you're conforming.
That's what I, we do.
Okay.
And Lot 2B does have it. I mean, I, even, there's several lines here, but the lot line.
Right, right, and, and you can build one, you can build one house on it.
Absolutely.
Right, that's the way it, the way it sits right now, it's conforming, you can build one house on it.
Absolutely. And I have two buyers right now that will be happy to build one house on it, or no houses on it. One purchaser is a contiguous lot owner who just wants to own it for four-wheeling and isn't intending to build anything on it. And the other potential buyer wants to build one house on it, just one. And so either of those buyers could, could purchase this land as long as it can be subdivided away. It certainly can be sold as 29 acres, and Sally can change her, her plans and build her studio across the lake, or the, across from her current house, but her.
I, I guess, I, I'm, I'm a little lost, Diane, but if I, if, if you leave that lot on Brickyard Falls, um, that's 29 acres or whatever, if you leave it the way it is.
Mm-hmm.
You don't, obviously you don't have to come here. The only thing you want to do probably is combine those other two lot, those contiguous lots, even though you can't get access. And now you have to figure out how can you get access, right? An, an easement or whatever you need all the way back then.
Right. So what her preference was always, was to build her studio close to Brickyard Falls Road. And that was the initial proposal we put in, but that didn't leave the proper frontage for the remaining lot. And nobody could be certain that a developer would buy the remaining parcel and that a road would ever be built. So we redesigned it.
Right, right, it, yeah. Right, and, and, and the board wouldn't, it would require a variance that probably wouldn't happen.
Right.
Um, so.
So right now, you, you, you're saying that we need a variance on the width and length issue? Um, because if we're changing the 29 acre lot in any way, it becomes non-conforming. But you're thinking that if Lot 2A was shrunken in a way, it would be less non-conforming and, or they'd give a variance? I guess what I'm trying to understand is, how would shrinking 2A make the larger lot conforming? Would it make the width and length allowable? I, I don't know how to measure it, is what I'm telling you, Jamie. I don't know where the width and length measurements come from. So if someone can tell me if it's the longest width of the lot and the longest length, or if it's the shortest width and the shortest length, I, I don't know. It's not a rectangle, it never will be. So how to make the two and a half to one, uh, judgment is what I'm looking for guidance on. Um, so that I can make the 29 acre lot work.
Um, I think before I give you that answer, I want to consult with, um, I want to consult with the zoning board.
Okay.
Sure. And, uh, further with, you know, with members of this board. So I don't want to answer that right now.
Oh, that's okay.
I do have some thoughts about it. Um, and, yeah, I just don't want to throw. I do have some thoughts about it. And, yeah, I just don't want to throw something out that's not.
Yeah. So the, the theme I've gotten after listening to discussion, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the, the, the planning board is concerned that they don't ha- I haven't supplied them with enough information to make a judgment on this. And what I would say in response to that is, um, if you want me to prepare site plan review along with the subdivision requests, I can do that if it's necessary. If it isn't necessary, we'll do it in stages. And site plan can happen after, after the subdivision is complete. But I guess the concern that I've heard from the planning board is they don't want to give a subdivision to somebody who can't do then what they want with the subdivided parcel. So they want me to go a little further along the road of site distances, driveway placement, roadway placement in the future. And all that's fine. I don't mind doing that. And I don't think the applicant, the owner minds doing that. I don't want to be viewed as somebody who is trying to cut corners or not do enough. So if somebody would give me a full list of what is really necessary for you to have a full understanding, the next time I come back, I'll have that for you.
I think we said this, but. Who was trying to talk?
It was me. Go ahead, John.
Well, um, I'm not looking for, um, to do a site plan review on this. Um, as far as any of the things that we've suggested, uh, Diane, they're, they're simply suggestions. So that you don't get into a position where you do a subdivision with something in mind. And then the subdivision's completed and you can't do the things that you originally subdivided the land for in the first place.
I'm completely with you on that, John, and I appreciate that. I absolutely do. I wouldn't want Sally to go through all of this and then not be able to build her accessory building. That would defeat the whole purpose. Really, it would.
And then the second point is, um, just the way it's configured in this map currently is not, in my opinion, in the spirit of our code.
Okay. And, and I assume by that you mean that the irregular look of the lot is, doesn't conform with the, with the length requirements? Or is there more to it in your mind, John?
No, the flag lot, the flag lot.
Okay. So when you say flag lot, you're, a lot of times when someone talks about a flag lot, they're talking about a non-conforming lot, not a conforming lot that looks like a flag. In this instance, the, the, the two lots each have the proper frontage on a proper road. So for example, two B has over 250 feet of frontage on Brickyard Falls, even though there's certainly a pole shape going up to the majority of the lot. And then the lot two A, um, with the house on Clearwater conforms with the R40 with 150 foot of frontage on the circle. So, so even though they're not conforming, when you, when you say flag lot, usually that means non-conforming lot that looks like a flag because there's none.
Well, it's the two, it's the two to, two and a half to one.
Yeah. So I guess if I knew where, what, see, that's the only problem for me. Is, is, is there ever going to be a configuration of two B that allows two and a half to one? E- even though the current one is conforming because it is what it is? Can we change it at all and have it conform? Because if we can't, then, then this is a lost leader.
I, yes, um, I do want to point out one thing because some of the board members have a tough time reading this. Um, and Steve, maybe you can help point out what the measurement is of lot two B from the difference between where the center line of the road is, what the depth is to the border of lot two A. And then also what the measurement is from the, um, original street line to the side of lot two A. And then I, yeah. Okay. So from lot two A to the original street line is, am I reading that right at 80 feet?
Exactly. Seventy nine point eight inch.
To here, this length?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not to, not to the center. But what is it? Well, what is it from the center?
Well, less thirty. So it's, uh, forty nine.
Yeah. So this is 51 from here to here.
Thirty nine, thirty nine, forty, or thirty, right.
Okay.
It's about fifty feet.
Okay. So in, in looking at this and where it came from, but yes, we have road frontage. And that's all we have is road frontage, that there's really nothing that that land could ever possibly use for, except for the mere purpose of road frontage. And if lot two A was a lot shorter in depth and you got more road frontage that just in theory, like if somebody had a, an accessory building of a garage up near the road or something, you know, that they had appropriate setbacks and so on, but there's such a small amount of space there that it, it just says, that's all that, that was given there was strictly for road frontage. And there's no possible of anything else ever happening in that little strip.
Okay, so.
Just another way of looking at it.
I understand. So, so you'd like the driveway, the driveway needs to be longer and the lot two A needs to be shorter so that if some point in the future someone wanted to build something near the roadway that was a part of two B, they could. Is that it?
I'm, I'm just saying that it, it's so narrow in there that all that did was give it road frontage. And there would, would never, you couldn't build on it because there's no, there's not enough room for any kind of setbacks at all. I don't know. I.
I, I understand. So, so, um, if you can see again, now I'm running up against the, you tell me what to do and I'll do it. And it's my job to tell you what I want and you'll approve it or not approve it. I, I just, I guess when it comes right down to a summary of this is, is there any, any way that we can take a piece of the 29 acres and add it to the house and the lot across, uh, so that Sally can build an accessory building on it? Is there, or is, is there no piece of the 29 acre lot that can be added to the other two that would make this 29 acre lot conforming? That's what it comes down to for us. Um, and so if we know for sure that if we add any of the 29 acres to the other two lots, that it won't be approved, then we're done here. If there is some other configuration that is potentially an option, we just need some direction. Uh, if it's a measurement thing, if it's the two to one thing, or if we need a variance that we think, uh, would be approved, we're happy to go down those roads. And we're really appreciative of the frank discussion. Please don't feel like we're upset in any way. We just want to do what's necessary if it's possible.
Well, I think Jamie said that she wanted to confer with the ZBA.
Okay.
And, and with us before she gives you recommendations on possibilities.
Got it.
I think the other thing to keep in mind, and, and that's on the purely technical thing, is to, is to take a look at, um, the beginning of this, of the subdivision ordinance about what this board needs to do to, to really, um, for the orderly development of land. So even if, um, every technical aspect is met.
Right.
There are other things within the power of this board to require, to make sure that, that ultimately this, this big piece, this 26 acre remainder has the ability to be reasonably developed and reasonable roads and so forth, put in.
Right. So you're not even just looking toward the next buyer. You're looking toward the future. Meaning, e- even if I have a buyer that's willing to do nothing with the property, but own it and use it for four wheeling, that, that wouldn't be comfortable for you guys. You, you want to know what's going to happen next after that.
Right. Right. Just like those last people said, oh, we're going to connect it to our lot and don't, don't worry about it because we own it and, and it never happened.
Well, I don't know that that's what, I, I know that, um, that, that that property was purchased. I don't know if there was any agreement made that they would connect it. I just, I know two of them were connected and two of them weren't. So that's all I knew.
Well, I can tell you that today we would insist if they weren't going to be connected, that they be labeled as not approved building lots.
Got it.
So it would be clear that they weren't developable. And as to the twenty, and as to the large parcel here, I guess, I mean, I'm just trying to think back to on situations we've had like this in the past. I mean, certainly it might be possible to, um, approve something like this, but, uh, but it would be, uh, with restrictions on what development could take place on that property. I mean, like we've had people come before us that said exactly what you said. We've got, you know, we just want to, uh, use it for a recreational piece of land. We don't intend on developing it. And, uh, those restrictions were put right into the, uh, right into the subdivision plan, as I remember. And I don't think you want to do that. I don't think you want to restrict yourself like that. So.
Well, to be perfectly blunt with you, Sally, Sally intends to sell the property in order to move forward with other plans she has to do other things. And, you know, let the buyer beware, th- they're going to either buy it knowing that they're restricted or they're going to buy it knowing they can develop it. Most people of this caliber of buyer, unless they're buying it for their own single family dwelling and know that whatever zoning is and whatever driveway is necessary can be put there, won't spend half a million dollars or maybe a little less on a piece of property that they know they can never develop. Because for their future planning purposes, it wouldn't make economic sense. So I'm, I'm working with some fairly sophisticated buyers and they want to know that the subdivision can occur and that what they're left with at some future point in time could be developed. So we're happy to work with you to make those adjustments so that could happen. And hopefully it will help the tax base and be wonderful for the, both the town and the applicant in the future. I don't want to leave this meeting with you thinking that we're, you know, upset in any way. We just, we need to get to know you, need to know what your needs are, need to know what we need to provide you so that the next time we meet, you know, we're checking off the boxes so that you feel more comfortable in your decision making.
Any other comments from any board member this evening?
I would never, ever be upset at an applicant that came here. I just like to talk frankly.
Oh, and we appreciate frankness. It gets things from A to B rather quickly. Seriously.
Yep. Steve, can you take down that map now? Thank you, sir. There we go. All right. So.
So where do we go from here?
I think, um, as Jamie said, that we'd like to, uh, talk with our zoning, contact them and get an interpretation first on that two and a half to one.
Okay.
Work from there. As we talked, I do think as it is a town road, if you contacted Tom Purcell and found out, and I guess to be clear that are you talking just a road access or road access and driveway access?
You know, whatever the lot is that it results, if it's a conforming lot, it can be sold. And if it's a non-conforming lot, it can't be sold because no one will buy it and you won't subdivide it. So from our perspective, um, we either sell it as is because, as Jamie pointed out, it's conforming because it was allowed to be that way at the moment. And then let the buyer decide how or if they're going to develop it. And if changing it in any way will make it non-conforming, uh, and we can't make it conforming, then that's something else. I mean, Sally's simply trying to, you know, she's got a dream of having a studio near her home and this is what she's trying to accomplish. The things about the future probably shouldn't have been raised because it only makes things messier and more complicated. At the moment, she just wants an accessory building and enough land to put one on that is near enough her house so that she can just go around the corner and do her work out of her home, not in her home. So she can use her home for family instead of having one whole floor taken up by her studio. And that's where we are. And frankly, the selling of the remaining land will help her finance that situation. But she's going to sell the other land regardless because it's not necessary to their future right now. So. And there's been a lot of interest in it. So we're hoping someone will buy it. But every one of the contracts that have come through with offers have made as a contingency to the deal that the land be subdivided and in an approved subdivision, you know, that the land is an approved lot for building. So, um, if because of its shape, it will only be conforming if it's sold as one piece. And that's something we'd like to know sooner rather than later. But if there's a decision on the width and depth, you know, that's, that we can work with or a variance can be granted, we'd love to go in that direction too.
I think that's, that's the first point that we need to get a definitive answer on and then get that to you. And then from there you'll know which direction and come back to us then with, with what you want. And then we'll see that, okay, does it fit into that code then?
Right. Okay. And then if, once that decision is made, if we, if we have that understanding, then we would provide you with additional information on, you know, where the best placement of a roadway might be for the back portion of the lot for the future and site distances and things like that. And obviously, um, we have to get some clarification on if a toilet and sink are allowed in an accessory building. Because that will be probably a prohibitive thing. If there's not a toilet there, it's probably going to be difficult for her to run back and forth to go to the bathroom during a workday. So. And I don't know, honestly, I, I wish I did know what is allowed in accessory building. I know you don't want to build an accessory building that's pretending to be an accessory building, but is really a little house where you sleep and eat and do all these things. And I know sneaky people do that. I'm telling you, we're not. We need a toilet, a sink and a barn is what we need, is what we're trying to build. So, um, there you have it.
Well, Bob can tell you when I would need that.
Yeah. Which generally, a lot of times that if, basically accessory building, but it becomes a building and to subdivide a lot, basically, generally, there's three things that, is there water? Does it perk for a septic? And do you have road access?
Correct. So right now we're not looking for a building, but it certainly would need to have a well and a septic system built if there's going to be a toilet and a sink. And if there isn't going to be a toilet and a sink, then maybe she'll find another piece of property to put her studio on. And sell the 29 acres as is. We're just trying to do, I mean, I'm just trying to do for her what she desires. And so if we can make it happen, we can. If we can't, we can't.
Anything else, Jamie, for a nutshell? Okay, Diane, you've got our contact info. We've got your.
And, um. So I'll wait to hear from Jamie on the width and depth part since I have. So I'll wait to hear from Jamie on the width and depth part, since I have this as one, two, three. Width and depth first. Accessory building, permissibility of toilet second. And third would be roadway placement, site distances. Those are the three issues that I heard over the course of this meeting. If there's something I've missed, will you let me know?
Yep. Guys, anything else come to mind real quick? Nope. Okay. I appreciate everybody's input into this tonight.
Sorry, it was such a long meeting, everybody. It's a little bit complicated and I apologize that we made the first meeting back such a marathon. But hopefully we've learned a lot and I, I appreciate everybody's time.
Well, on the law of averages, I guess it all evens out, so.
Well, remember, next time we're here, we start at six-thirty, so we can go even later.
Right.
Watch what you wish for. We know that, so.
Exactly. Thank you, everyone. Happy daylight savings.
Thank you, Diane. Take care.
Bye now.
Night, Diane.
Good night.
So the board members, obviously there was no Anadaga County Planning Symposium this year. There have been other avenues for online training. We will still be held to our four hours this year. I know Tim has, Prateshi has offered, possibly if we get another meeting month that there's no formal agenda, that our agenda becomes either he or he and Jamie doing a, a training with us and for us. So that might be an, an option for us. So. I guess other than that, anybody have any other issues, comments, whatever to bring up? Okay, I appreciate everybody's input. Thank you for your honesty and input tonight. And keep doing what you're doing. We'll see you next month. Maybe someday we'll get back in, in the actual town hall.
Jamie, am I allowed to contact her to find out what she plans on putting there?
I wish you would. It would help us tremendously.
I, I talked to her maybe three months ago and that's when I, that's when I heard what she wanted to put, you know, what she wanted to do. Yeah, it's not the same story at all. All right. As long as I can talk to her.
Yeah, and honestly, on the roadway issue, I don't think, you know, as we, as we discussed with her, I don't care about a roadway getting back to Two B, but I would think he would want to, if she's going to guarantee to somebody that that land is developable. I'm, I'm concerned about if she wants an easement for a driveway that she's got some decent site distance and that Tom takes a look to presumably put a culvert in for her driveway. But aside from that, I could care less about the access to Two B. I mean, that's their problem.
See what she comes back with, but otherwise, I guess let me know what you find out, Jamie. So, okay, other than that, if no issues, I think Kevin is making a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. All in favor to approve, disbanding tonight's meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Keep up the good work.
Good night.